All right, welcome everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and open the regular DeKalb City. Ah, thank you chief.
(laughing).
What's that sound?
I thought it was a siren.
I'm gonna go ahead and open the regular DeKalb City Council meeting of May 28th. Roll call please.
Sisata?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Seven present.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Captain Hy-Vee and Captain Volunteer Action Center, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance list?
(inaudible). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. Would take a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Zazada, seconded by Alderman Walker. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I.
The agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Presentations. We do have a couple of public comments. First is Mark Charvat. As a reminder, sir, you have three minutes.
First, congratulations to Mr. Powell. I'm gonna talk about the process here. Disgusted is one word that several individuals who applied for the Fifth Ward appointment used when discussing the process that Mayor Barnes used to fill the position. The other word is liar. I hate using that phrase in public, but that's what people are saying. At the last city council meeting, Mayor Barnes made an announcement for who he was going to appoint to fill the Fifth Ward Aldermanic position. The process has been riddled with untruths and has truly made this city look bad. As accurately pointed out by Alderman Walker and Alderman Morse, there are major problems with the process, especially when it comes to transparency. Best practices is a phrase that has been thrown out by the mayor. Obviously, it was not used in this process. A FOIA was filed by the media and citizens to obtain information on applicants for this public office. The city denied releasing the information, so the Attorney General's Office in Springfield got into the mix and ruled against the city stating that Mayor Barnes and the city violated the Freedom of Information Act by not complying once again. The AG ruled that the city improperly withheld the names of applicants for this public position against state statute. The AG's office mandated that the city must promptly release information, yet even after receiving this ruling, the adjourned by the Attorney General, the city failed to promptly release the information as it was instructed until after the announcement was made. A very important piece of the ruling from the AG stated, quote, "There is a compelling public interest in records that enables the public to make assessments and provide input to public officials, especially when filling an elected office, because the applicant will be appointed to an elected office without facing the public process of running for election. The public interest in disclosure of these records is especially acute before the appointment is made." Hope you got the emphasis there. Mayor Barnes, it would be helpful if you actually read and understood Illinois statute and don't continue to violate the law. It's another big lie to the public at the last meeting when Mayor Barnes criticized citizens for utilizing the Freedom of Information Act to obtain names of applicants for fear that the community would vilify the applicants. It should be duly noted that the Daily Chronicle newspaper also filed a Freedom of Information Act to obtain the names. So, does that make them a villain as well? Barnes falsely stated that individuals have vilified applicants in the past, yet provided no proof. In fact, quite the opposite happened this go-around. The names for the Fifth Ward, when they were made available, individuals in the community complimented the applicants for reaching out and a willingness to serve. I've heard nothing but admiration from community members that so many individuals reached out and applied for the position. What members of the community vilified was the lack of transparency and the process Mayor Barnes utilized to make his selection for the Fifth Ward. Please follow state statute.
You're done. Your time's up.
You interrupted me two times during that, thank you.
Sit down, please. So, I said please, sit down. What, please? Sit down.
You're demanding to do things?
Please is not a demand.
No, you said sit down.
Your time's up. So, the reason why I mentioned in the last council meeting about the vilification, and I'm not, I don't think the Daily Chronicle would vilify anyone in any way, shape, or form. The problem is, we have an online blogger who just spoke that repeatedly has vilified people in the community that wanna step up, serve, volunteer, and just do their best to make the community better. And when resumes are submitted to me, they have personal information all over them. And the last thing I wanna do is provide him that kind of information, which I have been told repeatedly has deterred many people from wanting to step up and serve. So that was the reason behind the reluctance to be able to release that information. So now, I have Chris Boyce, public comment.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take a moment to just, oh, you want me to move that up? There we go. Good evening. So I just wanna take a moment to just commend Andre Powell and his service first to the school board. I had the distinct honor of serving with him almost this last year on the school board. And if there's one thing that I can say about this city council, I know that you guys are determined for collaboration and continued economic growth and development for our community. And there is one person that I can tell you will continue to add on to that momentum that we've built here, and that is going to be Andre Powell. And I just genuinely wanna take a moment to thank this city council for all of that hard work that you guys have put in. I wanna thank Mayor Barnes for his consideration of Andre for this position. And I truly wanna take a moment to just commend Andre. Whether it's through his nonprofits that he does in the community, whether it is through the work at his barber shop or his academy, or whether it was through the school board, if there's a person that I have seen that loves this community, invests in this community, and continues to strive for better for our community, Andre Powell is the embodiment of that. And I think that as you guys go forward with him, you'll see that he'll be able to continue that collaboration, and I think we'll continue to see that continued growth, especially with his experience on school board, of us being able to bring all of the government bodies together even further going forward, so that we can continue to collaborate to make DeKalb and DeKalb County a place where we can all work, live, learn, and play. So I just genuinely wanna commend all of you for your service and thank Andre for stepping into this role. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. All right, with that, we can move on to Presentations. Do we need a motion to bring Presentations to the floor? Yeah. So, we're gonna move on to the swearing-in of Andre Powell for our newly-appointed Fifth Ward Alderman. I'm gonna have a few comments afterward, but right now, why don't we just get started and get you in this darn chair, sir? So Ruth, you wanna come up? Andre, if you wanna come up to the front? You can stand in front of Ruth, I believe. She'll definitely tell you where you need to be.
(laughing).
Could you raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, Andre Powell.
Aye, Andre Powell.
Having been appointed as Spittport Alderman.
Having been appointed as Spittport Alderman.
In the city of DeKalb.
In the city of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Alderman.
The duties of Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
My goodness.
Thank you.
(applause). We're almost, almost done. So, I did wanna say a few comments, and I do appreciate Mr. Boyce for coming out today and sharing his experience as a school board member, what it was like to work with Andre Powell. I also have known Andre for a number of years, and his community, or his community service record is phenomenal. From day one, just listening to him engaging with our youth and trying to make an impact to the business that he runs that I frequented for a cut here and there, listening to his concern, his caring, and his desire to make a positive impact in our community, it's what I've heard year over year over year. Seeing him on the DeKalb School Board and working with him during last year in the property tax reduction, the desire for education, the desire for understanding, especially when it comes to such a complex issue like property tax levies, was impressive. He reached out not only to myself, but to other members of the community to educate himself on that. When I was reviewing all the applications that came through for this position, it was obvious Andre's Powell, Andre Powell's resume just stood leaps and bounds above the rest. So, I know Andre is gonna make an incredible addition to this council, and I'm really looking forward to serving with you, sir. So welcome, and thanks for your stepping up into this role. How about another round of applause for Andre Powell? (applause). All right, everyone that came out for Andre, you're more than welcome to go home. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Thanks for coming out and supporting. Take care, everybody. All right, moving on to Agenda Item E, Public Participation. We have one. Charvat, Mr. Mark Charvat.
And I congratulate again, Mr. Powell. Mayor Barnes also falsely told listeners on his radio show on Friday that he contacted all of the applicants for Ward Five and acknowledged receipt of their applications. He didn't know such thing. He only made contact with individuals who applied for the position approximately 15 minutes before the agenda for the last meeting was released, informing them they did not get the position. He did not bother to send an acknowledgement or call them upon receipt of their application. What's really sad is Barnes did not even bother to thank anyone who applied when he made his formal announcement at the last meeting. Not a single thank you. Since Mayor Barnes is unwilling to take the time to thank the individuals who formally applied, I will take the time to thank them. Like to thank Sean Langley, Mike Tridle, David Gallica, Killian Becker, Alexa Carifio, Stephen Johnson, Melissa Garman, and Gwendolyn Marshall. Compliments to everybody who's, who made the application. I'm sure there are many other members of the community who would also like to thank all the applicants. It's sad that Mr. Barnes showed zero respect for the other applicants to even acknowledge them. It should be noted that not one applicant received an interview. It's my understanding that even the individual appointed did not get an interview either. Very strange way to make decisions. Also worth noting, in his radio interview on Friday, Mr. Barnes said, quote, "If you wanna be Alderman of the city of DeKalb, you've gotta want it." Barnes' statement implies that the eight individuals who formally applied did not want it. How would you even know? You didn't even bother to talk to them. So what does this do for future applicants who wish to volunteer for city commissions or fill a public position? It tells them if you're applying with Mr. Barnes, don't bother, he won't give you the time of day. This sets poor precedence. It rests solely upon Mayor Barnes. Perhaps this is the way Mayor Barnes does his private business. It's, it's great that other Aldermen have taken notice of Mr. Barnes' failure. As quoted in the Daily Chronicle, Alderman Zazada pointed out that when speaking about Mayor Barnes, one would think that a business owner and a businessperson would follow best practices and interview candidates and not presuppose who ought to be the candidate before he even knows who the candidates are. Alderman Walker, also in the published comment in the Chronicle, stated that the tainted process by failing to give all candidates a fair shake was obvious in place here. Hopefully, the council can go forward with a more transparent process in the future. If this mayor won't, perhaps the next mayor in May of 2025 will. On a positive note, in my comments, I have nothing negative to say about Mr. Powell. I think Mr. Powell will do an excellent job and is an excellent addition to this council if he remains independent. Mr. Powell stated that he is in favor of transparency and accountability, and those values are important to him. I take him at his word and will hold him to that. Good luck, Mr. Powell. I wish you the best. I think you'll serve Ward Five very well. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to artificial intelligence and how it can on-the-go fact-check things, which would be phenomenal going forward. Someday, we'll have that. All right, until then, Agenda Item F, Appointments. We have none. Moving on to Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of April 22nd, 2024. Number two, minutes of the special city council meeting of April 27th, 2024. Number three, minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 13th, 2024. Number four, accounts payable and payroll through May 28th, 2024, in the amount of $2,542,967.17. Number five, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, April 2024. And number six, FY 2024, human services funding first quarter. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
The consent agenda has been approved. Agenda Item H, Public Hearings, we have none. Agenda Item I, Considerations, we have none. So that brings us into Resolutions. Agenda Item J, number one, Resolution 2024-056, authorizing agreement with the DeKalb Corn Classic and Kishawaki Sunrise Rotary Club for the 2024 DeKalb Corn Classic and 5K, 10K, and Taste DeKalb events on September 29th, 2024. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell. Awesome. And real quick, just so you all know, I won't participate in the conversation, and I'll recuse myself from the vote because I'm president of the DeKalb Corn Classic still. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And just before I begin, I also want to welcome Alderman Powell. On behalf of roughly 230 full-time employees and several dozen part-time employees who work for the city of DeKalb, we wish you the very best, and we're, we stand ready and willing to serve.
Thank you.
So, happily, the Classic is slated to happen again this year. It's been a very successful event. It gets bigger every year. Kudos to the Corn Classic Committee and the Sunrise Rotary Club, who once again are collaborating on this. A lot of people are involved, from NIU to local businesses, to individuals who just wanna contribute and make this Fall Classic a very welcoming and fun event. And so, as before you again tonight, there is a waiver of fees that's requested. We've waived the fees for this since its inception back in 2018. We recommend your approval.
Questions or comments, council? Hearing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Abstain.
Larson?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution 2024-056 passes? All right, number two, Resolution 2024-057, authorizing the purchase of three police, three police patrol vehicles from Galena Dodge and related upfitting items from CDS Office Systems, Ray O'Hearns, and other vendors in an amount not to exceed $210,000. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Walker. City Manager.
And thank you, Mayor. The FY 24 budget, which is what's currently supporting our, our services to the city of DeKalb, identified four new or replacement vehicles for the police department. They would be new, and has in the budget, a budget of $260,000 and Fund 420 for that purpose. One of those vehicles was bought earlier. We found, as you can see in the background, that the Ford Explorers that have been, and Interceptors that have been the, the bread and butter of our fleet are not available currently. We don't have any idea when they will be, between now and the end of the year. And it could be because of refitting that's happening with Ford, having to do with a lot of things, including issues on the EV front. We don't know if we'll be able to replace these even in the spring of next year through the Ford Motor Company. So, we are proposing tonight that we go with a Dodge model. The Dodger Angle model and Dodge Charger have also, for a long time, been the, of choice to a lot of different departments that hadn't committed like ours to the Ford. They, they more than meet our minimum requirements, and we'd like to proceed with the purchase of the remaining three vehicles through a Dodge make and model. The total, including upfitting, comes to 210,000, and with the 41-plus thousand that's already been spent, we're within that budget that you created back in December. So, we recommend your approval.
Comments or questions, council? Alderman Walker.
Hey, City Manager, I like the jacket, just so you know. Kinda look like Bob Knight back in his day, but anyways. So I got a question. So I see we're gonna try to switch over, you know, to the Dodge brand. So my question is, do you think, you know, since Ford's are having issues, do you think that we'll try to weed out all the Ford at some point and, you know, pretty much go to, you know, Dodge for, you know, all the vehicles? Or we're just gonna, you know, just go with these two just for right now?
So, yeah, fair question. I'd say at this point, it's, it's too early to tell. We don't know how this will work out, and there may be some issues with other manufacturers. So, but there is some urgency to replacement of these vehicles. We've talked a little bit most recently at the strategic planning session about the condition of fleets, and the council got a copy of where they were in terms of age and so forth. So we're, we're not replacing the newest ones, we're replacing the oldest ones, and we'd like to proceed with this. They are, this, this is not a B car. This is definitely an A car. And some obviously prefer this to other makes and models, so with your support, we'd like to proceed.
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Resolution 2024-057 passes. Agenda Item K, Ordinances, second reading, we have none. Agenda Item L, Ordinances, first reading. Number one, we have Ordinance 2024-023 amending Chapter 24 Building Code to adopt the 2021 International Mechanical Code with amendments, the 2021 International Fuel-Gas Code with amendments, the 2023 National Electrical Code, NFPA 70, without amendments, the 2021 Illinois Energy Conservation Code without amendments, amendments to Article 9 State of Illinois Plumbing Code, and other amendments. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Powell. City Manager, we do have Chuck Shepard here, and I know he would like to comment. Do you wanna start off soft, Chuck?
Okay.
Okay. And if you could let us know your role in, in this.
Chuck Shepard, Shepard Construction. I've been in business here for 50 years, and I'm the chairperson of the committee. I've actually been on that same committee in 2015, well, actually even going back into the 80s. So I'm kinda familiar with the process. In the last code update sessions, we had to go from 2003 to 2015, and it was an arduous job, and it took us 18 months. I reported into, you know, you guys as a council periodically. We're here trying to update a little more quickly than we have in the past, and I promised I wouldn't ramble, so I won't read this whole thing here to you tonight.
Thank you.
But what we are asking is, or let me just go backwards. If you see the names of the people in, in the backup material, which Bill just did a wonderful job of telling what we've been doing for the last five months, and Jason Barrow is a Sycamore Plumber, he's actually a fourth-generation family company, Steve Dunin, DeKalb Mechanical, Kenny George, Wedberg Electric, Keith Higgins is a construction consultant, Lisa Sharp, a local DeKalb commercial and residential architect, and then myself. So, I mean, we've all really committed, and we meet for two to three hours every other Tuesday. And what we're asking here is, and we work very closely with Don Harper, who is here tonight, the head of the code department. What we're asking tonight is, we've gotten through the five codes, and they are in books just like this. So, just to show you kinda what we're doing, I mean, it, it takes some time to, and, and we're all doing it so that when we come and try and have a very useful meeting and, and grind through stuff that we have disagreements with on the daily, or the weekly meeting. The next step for us, if you so desire to pass this this evening, is then we'll move forward, and this is actually the International Building Code for Commercial, and then there's an equal-sized book, International Building Code for Residential. So we still have a lot of work, and you'll be seeing us, what would you, our goal was probably, we, our goal is late summer, but it's probably gonna be early fall. So that's our next task at hand. I'm also staying in close, I'm part of the Builder Association and our Governmental Affairs Committee, and so I'm staying in real close contact with John Sauter, Sycamore Code, Building As Like Dawn, building official, Derek Highland at the county, same position, then Brian Gregory, who's the head of the county. So, we're trying to have the whole geography of this area come and be on the same set of codes, so that it takes out a lot of the question marks as, as builders, our industry tries to go forward. The state, in their wonderful thoughts, which I happen to disagree with, but they have, in part of establishing this, this is a, an energy code now, and it's mandatory, and it's in your backup. You cannot opt out of it, even if you're a home county or home rural municipality. And there's actually, in this code and the residential code, there's a section on insulation and the insulation requirement. But the state of Illinois decided to come up with this whole new thing, and really, it doesn't, where this code set, which is a, used all over the United States, has energy zones, so that somebody down in the very bottom tip of, of the state of Illinois probably has to do things differently than we do at the northern. But this doesn't take that into account at all. They've just arbitrarily, and you cannot opt out of it. So that's just a little grandstanding on my part. And then, uh, state, oh, and then, and finally, the state of Illinois, too, a lot of, I primarily work in, in this maybe 19, 20 miles circle, and so I'm under code departments, similar to DeKalb, Sycamore, Genoa, et cetera. A lot of the rural areas across the whole state might not even have a code, and now the state of Illinois says everyone has to have a code in place, and you can't let it lapse more than nine years. So right now, we're right on the cusp. We're 15 to 21, so just going forward, I hope not to be on the committee that's working out in nine years, but who knows? That is all, unless you had some questions.
Any question for Chuck, or do you wanna, should we just let Bill follow up with that? Chuck, if you wanna stay up just in case there's questions?
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great. City Manager? That was a pretty good explanation.
I heard tell of a, of a mayor who one time said, "Not here, in another community, not too far away." Well, we've got Boca when we need it. I mean, Boca used to be the code series, the international series that preceded the international code series that Chuck is introducing to you tonight, which I like to talk just a little bit about. It was an acronym for the Building Officials and Code Administrators International. And so the Boca Code is what the city of DeKalb had adopted, and, and then every three or five or six or nine years.
It's a three-year cycle.
It's a three-year cycle. That's right.
And this is three-year cycle, too. What allows.
I see how this is gonna go.
Yeah.
This is how the meetings go, too.
He told me to stay up here. But we were, we were looking, the 24 code has come out, and we thought, wow, why don't we just do 24 and take one extra step? But it, it takes the time to wring out all the little idiosyncrasies, so we opted here. John Sauter has done what we're proposing tonight. He, he did it, I think, three weeks ago at their Sycamore Council. So again, we're, we're staying in companion, Mr. Mr.
Thank you. So I'm gonna cut to the chase here. You have a lot of background. And I, one last thought about this, this board that Chuck chairs. Everyone on that board is just as engaged and just as, as knowledgeable about what we're presenting to you tonight as, as Chuck is, and I really appreciate the energy. is. And I really appreciate the energy. There is very seldom that you get a volunteer group that are willing to put in this kind of energy and time. And we really are grateful for it. And I speak, I know, for Don Harper as well. And Don, credit to Don, who has been our staff liaison, taking notes and helping prepare agendas and the like, and to steer, helps through a conversation as well. So, as Chuck said very accurately, we have five codes before you tonight. There are at least that many left. And they are the larger building codes, in many respects, more performance, but not exclusively. So, by way of definition here, there are specification codes and performance codes. What's the difference? Some are a little bit of both. But National Electrical Code, as you would imagine, is a lot more specific. You're going to run this size wire from here to there, and you have to da-da-da-da-da. Very specific. It's like, there's a stop sign, it's red, you have to stop. Performance codes, just to paint it a little more extreme, like the building code generally, although there's a lot of specificity in that, are, you have to meet a standard of, say, a bearing standard of 3,000 pounds per square foot. But you can achieve that with wood trust, wood frame, steel, metal framing, stone, concrete, other things. So, in other words, it allows a certain latitude for materials and methods that are unique or are maybe much more popular in a certain area. If you go into the southwest, you see a lot of homes that are built with masonry, and then there's a coating that goes on either side. Not so much in the northern climate because we're more interested in preventing that air loss, the warm heated air loss into the outside. But nobody cares too much about that if you're in Phoenix tonight, where it's 100 degrees. So, as Chuck said, though, there are some specification codes now, and there's several in the state of Illinois that have been, they're called state codes, such as, the state actually has taken the international code, the energy code, and called it the state energy code. It was easier to do that than to come up with a parallel code. And so, now, we have to adopt this. We could be more restrictive, but we can't be less restrictive. So, Chuck has talked about the energy code. It will add to the cost of a single-family home and also commercial construction. There are higher standards in this code for resistance to heated air loss. If you've ever done a little bit of insulating with fiberglass, whether it's batt, you know, either foil faced or paper faced, or just the wool itself, and you're pushing it into the wall cavities, R19, doesn't matter how we get to 19, used to be, used to be the standard, then R20, more or less, and now it's going to be R30. So, you've gone up 50% in the expectation for reduction of heated air loss into the outside. So, we're going to have tighter homes than we have had ever before. And there are other pieces that go with that. But that is just something to know. We can't unilaterally say, ah, we don't think we like that. Let's go back to the old days of R14. No, we can't do that. And there's also a higher standard for loss through your second floor or first floor ceiling if it's intervening between the heated space and an attic. Roughly the same percentage increase. Okay, so, one of the other things that we've asked, we have before you tonight is the International Fuel/Gas Code. Rather esoteric for most people, but obviously, fuel and the conservation of fuel, particularly carbon-based fuel, is a priority in this day and age. And there is more concern for loss of heat. Again, there are new specifications that have to do with the safety of the different types of venting pipe and so forth. The Illinois Plumbing Code, interestingly here, the addition that has been in place for a long time, the 2014 addition, has not been updated by the state of Illinois. So, it's a state plumbing code. However, in our Chapter 24 in the municipal code by which we adopt the state plumbing code, we had a number of exceptions and so forth. Those have to go away. And what I've explained in your background on page five with respect to what needs to be identified as being now the local code as it applies, is not an addition to the plumbing code, but it now is a full embrace of that plumbing code, if you follow me. Mechanical code jumps, just like the energy code, from 2015 to 2021. As Chuck said, there is a 224 code, but usually you wait a year or two just to see how, there's a lot of back and forth as people begin to build to the higher code, and they see issues. And then the code administrators get together, and they talk regionally, nationally about, well, maybe we weren't so smart, and maybe we need to look at this again. And the shakeout takes one to two years. We were reticent about embracing the 24. It's just, here it is, it's May, almost June, but they're just now starting to publish some of that conversation that's coming back from builders and the like, and architects and others. And finally, National Electrical Code, this, what's before you tonight is the 2023 code. Actually, the only difference between the 23 and the next most recent one is that in the 23 code now, all receptacles in your house have to be GFCI. The only difference between that and the previous code, which is the 20 or 21?
20.
20. Is that dryers and...
Some pumps, ejector pumps.
Some, ejector pumps, don't have to be GFCI in the lower. So, the, actually, the cost is negligible. And since you're, if you're electrician, and you're in there, and you've got all the wire, and you've got all the, all the pertinences, it takes nothing in terms of cost. And actually, both are in the vicinity of water, you know, another appliance. So, that's what's before you. The, again, the building code has gone through every line, every notation. There are lots of cross-references in these codes, back and forth, and you'll see a little bit more of that later on in the summer into the fall when we bring back some other codes for you. But these are the specification codes we'd like you to approve tonight and on both readings so that we can launch, I mean, we're already into the building season. But at this point, we'd like to get some of the new builds that haven't already been permitted. If they've been permitted, then they stay with what they had been reviewed under. But we'd like to get that in place.
Counsel, questions or comments?
One, one other comment, I'm sorry. In this energy code, which the state adopted, they actually adopted it. It's in place January 1 of 2024 of this year. But there's an exception. You had a community or municipality had six months to engage. If you do not tonight, it's still going to automatically slap it on us. So, but it's just like, I just, I hate that. That's all for me here.
Any questions or comments, Counsel? Yes, Alderman Perkins.
So, to clarify, City Manager, and I think you touched on it, the effectiveness of this will be driven by permitting date, right?
Yes.
And that's occupancy permitting or building permitting?
Building permit.
Okay. So, process would be, we issue a permit for something today, and if we issued, let's say it was issued yesterday.
Yeah.
It would go back to the previous standard, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so it won't impact anyone with a job currently in play, yeah.
Yeah, you're in double jeopardy then. If it doesn't go like that, then you have to start all over and the cost and waste of time.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Shepard, thanks for chairing the committee. Thanks for everyone that, you guys did put in a lot of effort in this. So, it's nice to at least get to the other side of it for now. And we look forward to seeing you in nine years.
All right, roll call, please.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance 2024-023 has passed on first reading. I'd take a motion to waive second reading.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Walker, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any questions or comments on waiting for second reading? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-023. Thanks again, Mr. Shepard, and you're more than welcome to exit stage left if you want, or you can stick around. Moving on to number two, ordinance 2024-024, amending the fiscal year-end, December 31st, 2023 budget. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sisada, seconded by Alderman Walker. City Manager?
Thank you. And Susan Hama is in the audience tonight, ready to support me if there are any questions that I can't handle. But at this time, usually a meeting before we're to receive the final audit. We have spent time, some weeks, working on the preliminary drafted audit that has come to us after almost five months of work by our auditors, which begins in January, and a lot of the field work's done in February and March. And then we have a lot of, they do their work, and then they give it to us, and then we have to go through all the pages. And that's a substantial document. And I'm happy to say there are just six items that I have before you out of those several hundred pages of audit. And it's, it's an interesting, we'll have a chance, I believe, as it stands right now, we'll be ready to bring this to you at the first meeting in June, which is a couple weeks ahead of when we normally are. But we'll see. Unless you heard, did you hear anything today about that?
I haven't.
Oh, okay. And it's on the agenda for tonight. But these are changes in the 2023 budget, which is what's being audited. I'll just, there's background here. I'm not going to repeat everything I said here, but I'll just touch on the changes. First, the American Rescue Plan Act, a little more interest there than anticipated in the budget, and we have to represent that change. It's a positive change of about $95,000 in fund balance. That, the residual, including this, this increase, which would be a carryover into 24, will be spent this year in the general fund, as the council had intended. GMP fund, again, a net increase in revenue there of about $97,000. The other thing is, back in the fall of 2022, when we're putting together the 23 budget, we had not had any discussion about building a new fire station and going to bond on that and the proceeds for that. So, we have to, we had set up a working fund to receive the bond proceeds, and this makes that official and permanent, and then sets up the bond revenue for the payouts which are to come for the construction process. There's an SSA, which is known as III. It's Fund 223. It's a Heritage Ridge subdivision. The fund balance, we're making a change of $56. That just has to do with the spending in 23 to fulfill those commitments. The Capital Equipment Replacement Fund, which is obviously what we pay our vehicles out of, we increased the fund balance there. So, this is mostly all good news. It's $112,000 and some additional surplus property, which was sold, some equipment, and some years are good, some years are bad. It really depends as things come up. Actually, as we replace vehicles, obviously, there's spending involved in that. There's also for the trades, and sometimes the equipment is not really traded. We put it to auction, or we ask for price, for contributions, and we do okay. And that. Refuge and Recycling Fund, this is a pass where typically it's a wash, money in, money out. Really depends on timing and where you are at the end of the fiscal year, and what they can count, what they can't count. But in this case, it wasn't a timing issue. We, we've been more aggressive in our street sweepings downtown. Those of you who've been aware of that have noted it, I think, with support. Just the removal of, the proper removal of sweepings to LRS site costs another $25,000. And as you know, back when we were putting the budget together again in the fall of '22, we didn't know where we were going to be, who was going to be the new vendor in, with respect to the waste and recycling system that we have and curbside recycling. So, the, there was an increase in the contract cost, and that came to about $37,000. So, that's, that's it. And thank our finance department for their good work, and all the departments for helping us work that budget and be very prudent about how we spend.
Questions or comments, Counsel? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
All right, second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-024. Nice work, everyone, getting that done. That's fantastic to make sure that we've got a squeaky clean audit when we're finally presented with it. All right, moving on to Agenda Item M, Reports and Communications. Councilman reports. Alderman Walker, you want to kick us off?
Yeah, I was, I was at the groundbreaking for Fire Station 4. It's good, you know, I'm known chief for a while. It was pretty good to see that. It was my first one where I got to throw some dirt, you know. And I felt good to do that. I felt finally special, like I was somebody. So, no, I enjoyed it. And good luck for you guys, man. And you guys, some of the best guys I've met in this town since I've been here. So, it was an honor for me, seriously.
Alderman Verbic?
My second, Alderman Walker. Thanks to everyone that helped and made it out. Much appreciated.
Alderman Perkins?
Norport.
Alderman Larson?
Norport.
Alderman Sisada?
Norport.
Alderman Smith?
Oh, third, the other aldermen on Station 4. We did get wet. A certain alderman's car got wet, but remain anonymous. But, and welcome to Andre. So, I think he'll do great. So, that's it.
Alderman Powell?
I don't have much. I was able to visit some of the business district downtown DeKalb, and I met some of the owners of my ward, some of their staff. I still got a lot of introduction, a lot of introducing myself to do to the ward. But I look forward to being here, and I thank you all, and can't wait to get to work.
I'll be quick here. I just wanted to let everyone know, I've attended a DCDC member mentor matchup that they put on, which is, you know, a lot of our young leaders coming up in the community. They're matching them up with a variety of people in our community, and it was great to be a part of that. Also, our Citizens Community Enhancement Commission, they're firing on all cylinders. They were approving more murals, more wraps, more art downtown, which is just great to see the work that that commission's doing. Also attended New Med's ribbon cutting. That was a highly attended event. It was packed. There was a line, and it was really cool to see quarterback Jim McMahon there. And I actually got to shake his hand. And that man looked like he could go out on the field today. Had a cane, but physically, boy, he was, he was amazing. But we all know the abuse that man took on a few key games. Also, I attended, I went to Hinsdale and attended Metro West Networking Event. Metro West is an organization of mayors and communities that advocates on behalf of all of us, lobby on behalf of all of us for changes at the state to make sure that local control and our voice is heard. So, it was great. As we talked about in our strategic planning meeting, advocacy was going to become a big part of what we want to do. So, I just want to let you all know, continuing down that path and that organization, it was a wonderful event, met a lot of great mayors, city managers, and then the team with Metro West, too. So, I think they're going to be a great help for us. Also, was on the radio as usual with TD Ryan and WLBK, which is always good to do every month. I, too, was at the fire station groundbreaking ceremony, and that was really cool. It was a great event, chief. You could tell a lot of your team is excited about it. And it's just going to be a great addition to the south side of town and to DeKalb as a whole. I also this week, or this weekend, spent quite a bit of time with Chairman McDavid of the Citizens' Police Review Board. We have a vacancy on that board, and as we've been talking about, making changes in the way we do commissions and things like that, just talked to him about the process that we're going to start doing, bringing him involved in the selection of new members. So, there'll be more to come on that one. But Chairman McDavid, it was just a great conversation. I think he's really good in that role. And if you don't know, he also is the new principal of the new elementary school, the Lee Rory Mitchell Elementary School in our community. So, very engaged, very active man. Then also, you know, we had the Memorial Day Weekend, so attended the parade. Thanks for driving, chief. of the new elementary school, the Leroy Mitchell Elementary School in our community. So very engaged, very active man. Then also, you know, we had the Memorial Day weekend, so attended the parade. Thanks for driving, chief. I almost had to take the wheels, he was about ready to jump out and join the drum line. You could see him itching about it, but it was a really great parade, and the community came out in force. It's just one of those feel-good moments. We also had a Memorial Day program, had a lot of great speakers, including Sergeant Goodwin, right, chief?
Yep.
Yeah, Sergeant Goodwin, the former Marine, spoke to a packed crowd at the Elwood House, so that was wonderful to see. And then attended the AMVETS and American Legion event that they had later on in the afternoon, and they had a nice respectful flag ceremony. But also, they, nationwide, the president asked if we would have taps played at 3:00 PM across the entire nation, and then have a moment of silence, and that was actually really cool to just see that transpire and think that there were bugles all across our nation playing taps. It was a really emotional event overall. How about you, city manager? What do you have?
I just want to thank Scott Zach for his role in yesterday's...
Yeah, no doubt.
...event, and particularly the event at the Elwood House, but also organizing the parade, and a lot of things that he does quietly and without any fanfare, and I appreciate it, Scott.
I'm really glad you called that out, because yes, thank you, Scott. A lot of us don't know the amount of time and energy this guy spends behind the scenes to make something happen, and it happens so flawlessly, you think it's been done forever. But a lot of times, it's because of the work of you, Mr. Zach, so thank you. Without anything else, we can move on to agenda item N, executive session. We have none, which means adjournment. I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sir.
Moved by Alderman Powell, seconded by Alderman Walker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign. All right, we are adjourned.